All right, call the meeting to order, March 8th, 6 o'clock, 2021. The guest, Joseph Magren of Revised Regarding an Overview of the District Website.
Hi, thank you everybody for allowing me to see what I'd like to offer for the new website. Would I be able to share my screen?
You should be able to, yes.
Okay, it says host disabled participant screenshot.
I think Tina, you may have to.
I'm really bad at this, I'm gonna try.
I think she's trying to send me a message.
Hopefully we won't be at this too much longer, I hope.
Yeah, I hope so too. I hope it clears up enough. I guess I could start a little bit right now verbally. Tina and Jeff wanted me to do a quick overview of the website that we'd like to build for you guys if we're selected. Revised has been building government and government agency websites for over 20 years. The biggest claim to fame is that we build what's called a self-help type of website. It's made for your constituents to go to the website and with minimal reading of the homepage in one click, they can get to anywhere that they want. We have over 2,300 clients nationwide. Here we go, yay. Yeah, what we did before COVID went crazy on us is we actually interviewed 13 water agencies. And we interviewed management, but more importantly, we had residents, the actual constituents, and interviewed them. And each one of them had a computer. There's about 10 from each organization. And we had them go to about five or six different water agency websites. And had them get daily information. And when they started getting frustrated, we interviewed them and the end result is out of the 13, they told us exactly how they want the homepage of their website set on up to make it easier for them to use. So I thought if it's all right with you guys, I would quickly go over the survey results. Then I'd show you a couple of designs that we've done recently, show you the features that come with the website. And then if you want, I can show you quickly how, you know, Tina and Jeff can edit the website quickly and easily. And if I were to run at the mouth, I'll try to keep it down to about 20 minutes. Is that acceptable? Or you want me to cut it to 10?
Whatever you, whatever you can squeeze in in 10 minutes would be great. But if you have to go to 20, that's okay too.
All right, I'll go really, really quick and I appreciate that answer. So this is what we found on out. Number one, they want more of a self-help type of website. So the homepage is the dashboard for your constituents to get information quickly. Secondly, in your area of the country, 71% of individuals come to the website strictly on their mobile devices. So we've been creating mobile websites for water agencies for over 20 years, for over seven years now. We put in additional programming that turns on some of the new technologies like the high-definition video card. So it makes it a little bit more elegant experience. Another big item is ADA complacency. If you're using any type of federal government money, it's mandated by the federal government that you have all the programming in there for the vision impaired and the disabled individuals. So we do put all that in your website. Also, the residents want all the applications you have, whether it's water reports, online bill pay, anything. They want it in what's called an application slider. So, and they only want to see about five at a time. So they flick with their finger. So they get to the one they want, click it and they're there. As far as social media, they want to have a social media sharing app. So if they go to a page of really good information, they can pull it out of that page and put it into their personal social media and send it off to their friends and family members. Also too, in with our websites, we open up all the content so it's searchable by all the search engines. And you can set your own keywords on every webpage. The whole idea is when someone types in a question in their Google or being searched bar, they can, you know, try to pull them to the answer of the page on the website rather than the homepage. And that way they can get to the information quicker and easier. This next slide is strictly from the residents. This is how they want the homepage laid out now. Number one, they said they don't mind a longer scrolling homepage because they're already on their mobile devices. And they said they'd actually rather just keep scrolling down the page to get to the information that they're looking for. The second thing is they want any paragraphs on the homepage at all. So mission statement or, you know, welcome from the management or anything like that. Put that on and a button in the application slider, they could read it there. And now you have a dedicated whole page where you can put as much information as you want. Those paragraphs just make it cluttered up for them and it's only of use for like the first time you were to come to the website. They want to get to any interior webpage in one click from the homepage. So we created navigation that allows them to do that. They hover over the tab and they'll show them every webpage under there. Even if it's a couple of levels down, they can get there in one click. If you're listing upcoming news items or upcoming events, they only want to see three. If you put any more than three, they won't even look at the list. And we had computer behavioral software and that's exactly how they reacted. For emergency alerts or urgent alerts that you want everybody to be aware of, they don't want a banner at the top of the website that stays up 24 hours a day. They want a quick pop-up window that they can read quickly and close it on out. We found that if you kept it up 24 hours a day at the top, it really irritated individuals after about 20 seconds. They just wanted to get off the website. Because even if they were there for other reasons, they kept, their eyes kept being pulled up and distracted by the alert. As far as utilizing graphics or cartoon images on the website, they're not ADA compliant. But also the residents felt it sort of cheapened the professional look of the water agency. So using photos did a lot better and attracted them to more information. And the last item is the application scrolling slider that we talked about before. As far as hosting environment, we don't use any open source software because it's the number one target for hackers. There's been a 394% increase in water agency website hacking in just the last six months. The first targets are any type of open source websites like WordPress or Drupal. Because the code's available to the world, it's easy to get into the back door. We're utilizing the Revised Government Content Management System that we have built and the code is not available for people for inspection. So it's extremely secure. And we also put a lot of security software and hardware in there. So we haven't had any intrusions in over eight years. We put the website on the web server so people can quickly get to the website. But if you're going to edit the website, you log in there, but without knowing that you're editing on a technology server behind the firewall. So when you hit save, it pushes it here. And if you were to get hacked, we just have a 24-hour monitoring team that selects, republish. And it republishes out your whole website and you're ready to go. And if you need help at any time, you can give us a call. We also have different ways to get ahold of us 24 hours a day. So this is your website here today. As you can see, it's not real user-friendly, doesn't work well on mobile devices. This is what we did for Plum Creek Water Reclamation Authority in Colorado. As you can see, nice navigation at the top. Here's those quick link buttons to all the applications. And as they had, add additional ones, they scroll. They have, you click on it and takes you right to the information that you're looking for. But a very clean homepage, upcoming events and information is right there. This is what we did for Holly Navara Water System in Florida. Here's that homepage alert I told you about. If you select read more, it opens up an interior page with all the details that they want. Animation is good for people over 50 years old. It subconsciously pulls their eyes to the subject matter and just helps them navigate the website better. But if you don't want to see it, you can click out of it and you're right there. This is that navigation I spoke to you about. They only have a few pages, but when you hover over it, all the pages are exposed. Quick link buttons, upcoming three news articles. Another thing too that we found on out, especially with Holly Navara, is the residents don't really know how much work that they do in order to take care of the residents. They have clean water and availability, you know, at the turn of the faucet. So we put a couple of demographic items here so that way people would understand. You know, they've been doing it for 50 years. They have over 17,000 connections they have to maintain. How many miles of service line you have to take care of. So this way residents are more appreciative of the work that they do. This is what we did for West Slope Water District. Again, nice navigation. They had a rotating photo gallery here, but for some reason today it's just one photo in there. There's a homepage alert and then their information quickly and easily. Now I'd like to show you the features that come with your new website. Number one, if we do a longer scrolling design, we can put what's called a floating navigation. So even if you're halfway down, you still have control to get to the rest of the website. The second item is the navigation itself. This is that extended mega menu I was telling you about. So you can get to any webpage in one click right from the homepage. Homepage alert, if you don't need it, you can click right out of it. How do I frequently ask question module? The nice thing about this is as they type in the question, the answers come up to them. So they can get there really quickly and easily. Document center, with the document center, they can browse for the documents they want. But if they're looking for a special water report or a budget, they can type out in what they're looking for. And it brings up the documents that closely meet what they're looking for. We also are going to have the social media sharing app. So if they go to a page of information, they want to send off to their friends via their own social media. They just click the social media sharing app, open up the social media bears they want to put it in. The content's right here. And then they can put a quick post. And then in this case, I would be posting it to my personal Facebook. Also, language translator, over 95 different languages. So they can select it to the language of their choice. And now that webpage is in that language. This next item, we're going to install for free, but we just need your approval. It is not required for ADA complacency. It's an ADA accessibility widget. What it is, is if a vision impaired or disabled individual leaves their home, they don't have their personal computer with them most of the time. So if they're somewhere else at, let's say the public library and they come to your website, it brings the tools to them to be able to configure the website to make it easier for them to navigate. Whether it's visually or by highlighting hyperlinks or changing text size, et cetera. All these tools are at their back end. Do you guys like that idea?
Yeah, especially for older people, I think making the text figure is a good idea.
Yeah.
And you know what? Even with my eyes, I'm one of the older people, I'm sorry to say. You know, I use the tool myself sometimes just to, you know, take a look at things and make sure I'm reading things right. All right, excellent, excellent. And then we also have the web calendar. You can have as many calendars as if you feel that you might want to have. What's nice about it is this also has that keyword search. So if you're looking for a particular event and there's a speaker there, but you don't know what the name of the event is, you can just type the speaker's name in and it'll come on up. They can also look at it by the month, by the week, by the day, or just a big list. In each calendar, you can color code the events by a particular color to be able to see them or just look at just those events as well. The last item is a citizen request center. So what we found on out from residents is they have a lot of questions, but they don't know who to go to. And they get frustrated when they call on the phone or send an email and there's no reply back because usually it goes to the wrong person. So here you can put down different topics of information. And behind it'll be an email address of the person that could answer that question. So they'll go ahead and select that, put in their information, and then ask their question. And when they hit submit, it gets emailed right to that individual. So last item I'd like to show you real quickly is how you guys or your staff can edit the website. So you go to the website. That just might make 20 minutes. This is pretty cool. I'm usually 45. I thought I was spitting to you. So I go down to the bottom, select the word login. And now it takes you into the gateway. So you put in your username and password as a webpage editor. When you get to the website, anything with a blue box, you can edit. The most frequent edits are going to be with the webpage. So you just surf to the page that you want to edit. And you select edit page content. When you're in, there's frequently asked questions and videos in case you forget how to do something. You can have activation and expiration dates of certain pages. The more common edits are going to be uploading a photo, uploading a document and linking to another website. So we'll do all three of those right now. To upload a picture, I just go to the image gallery. I can drag and drop my pictures here. Or click in there and just pull pictures right off of my computer. I can also reuse pictures that are already on the website. And if I don't know where I put them, I can just search by name. Once I select the image itself, I can crop the image if I need to. I just select crop and I can wireframe, you know, what I want here. And then select crop. I can put the picture anywhere that I want on the page. For ADA complacency, I have to put a meaningful phrase for the screen reading software. So I put that on in. You can't save the picture unless you do that. And then I just select save. And now my picture is right over there in the page. Now it might not be the right size. So we give you the capability of clicking in the center and just putting it to the size that's going to be comfortable for you. If you want to upload a document into the page, you put the name of the topic or the document, highlight it. Go to the link manager icon and then just select upload file. And then I could again go to my computer and pull it off the computer. If it's a Microsoft Word document, that's usually good practice that make it a PDF. So you can check this box and they'll convert it to a PDF for you. And if you ever need to reuse a document that's already on the website and put it somewhere else, you can do that too. Just make sure you put in the tag of the totes, the screen reading software, what type of document it is, ADA complacency. And now we have that there. The next item I'd like to do is link to another website. So I put the name of the topic or the organization and highlight it. Go to the link manager icon and I simply put in the webpage address of where I want that hyperlink to go. And I select continue. I'm all done with my edits. So I just select save and it pushes it live to the website. Even adding a webpage is easy. I just select edit navigation. Select create new page. Name the page. And then I go down here and select which type of webpage layout that I would like. I select save. Now it's building the page and putting in a navigation. And I can always reorganize the website anytime I want to, just by dragging and dropping and reorganizing it that way. The last thing I'm going to do is I'm going to go to that new page. And I'm going to pop in a YouTube video. We're finding out that residents would rather watch a five-minute YouTube video to get them to understand something rather than reading two paragraphs. So you can create that video, upload it to YouTube, just copy the URL. And go to the page where you want to play, select edit page content. And then you select the video capability tool. And you can paste it in, select save. And then publish it right on out to the website. And then now you could play it, they can play that video right there on your website. So that's a very brief overview. There is a lot of power in the new website and the proposal I sent off. And I'll open it up for your questions now.
Do you recommend the employee, or you know, either Tina or Kim, looking at this every day? If people ask questions or have problems as far as the residents?
Well, that constituent request center, assistance request center, the whole purpose of that is put down the topics of people that have questions. So they won't have to look at it because when the residents fill that out and put their question in, it's going to go immediately be emailed to appropriate individuals so they can respond quickly. So this way there won't have to be any monitoring updates. It just makes it a little bit more efficient. But more importantly, whoever gets that question, they're going to respond back rather quickly, you know, usually within 24 hours. And the residents are happy with that.
Okay.
That's a good question though.
Is there, is there a feature on this where say somebody signs up for notifications from, from the site and water district page? And we have a water main break and we just posted on this website. Is there a way to send it out to any subscribers that would?
Like an RSS feed or something?
No, we got something better than that. And this is in your proposal and I apologize for not going over it with you. So we have an e-notification center. The way that operates is that residents want to select what they get updates for. So one of them will be that homepage alert and that's where you're going to have those types of emergencies. But there may be other pages within the website that when they're updated, they'll get an email alert with a link to the new information.
Gotcha.
They will manage it themselves. They'll put their email address and they only select the items they're interested in. And when those get an update, then it sends out an alert to them with a link to the new information. So will that work well, you think?
I believe so, yes. We would just have to get the folks to, you know, direct them to this page to sign up for those alerts.
Well, the most popular way is what Auburn Hills is doing for, they launched their website. And for the first month, they just kept this alert up. And if you have a news letter, then you can put it in there. And within the month or so, they'll all sign on up and then you can turn it off.
Okay.
But one thing I want to caution you on is that they have to sign up for it. You cannot put their emails in there for them because it's against the internet police law. And you know, the email will be shut down. You're getting all kinds of trouble.
Oh, it's good.
Thank you. I was hoping to hear someone go, oh wow, ooh, and I didn't hear any of that.
I was on mute.
Oh, okay. Now I feel better.
Now, how long would it take again to design the whole page, soup to nuts, once we got started?
So very quick overview of the whole process is we'll send in a design questionnaire. Probably the most hardest thing on there is going to be pick three websites you love for whatever reason. The rest of the other questions are rather quick. And we need about 15 high-resolution pictures. Once we receive that, we will have a design discovery meeting. Well, where our designer and myself will ask a bunch of questions so that the designer can create a brand-new design from scratch. We'll present the design to you. You can make changes to it. Once you approve that, we're going to take your existing content and come up with a new friendlier site map organization for you. We'll present that to you. Once that's approved, we'll move everything on over into the new site, train you and go live. Traditionally, this takes anywhere from 15 or 16 weeks up to 23 weeks. But it's because of our clients, let's say we give the concept to a client, then they don't even look at it for a week. And then they go, oh, well, I should probably get so-and-so to look at it. And they're not back till next week. So we just, you know, blew three weeks out of the schedule. So if you guys are anxious as we are, whenever we have any kind of question, if you can get answers back to us within three business days, we can knock that thing out very quickly.
And if I'm not mistaken, you already do our town website, correct? Town of Dayton?
Oh, you know, off the top of my head, I believe that's correct. I've been with Revised since 2001. And for the most part, at one time I could memorize all of our customers. But I'm almost positive that we do do.
They do.
They do. That's where I get the information from.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all. I don't have any other questions, so.
Oh, good.
Except for now.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. If you have any other questions, please get them to Tina. Tina, I'll make sure I give you answers within 24 hours. And hopefully you select us and we look forward to working with you.
All right, thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Joseph. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks, Tina.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Scott Medeas of Woodman Carn, project updates.
So I believe Scott was going to be joining us, but I don't know exactly where he is.
I'm here. I'm here, sir. Yeah, I'm actually on vacation, but I appreciate the opportunity to get together with you folks to provide you an update. So we've got a bunch of stuff going on with you. And I wanted to just have an opportunity to check in, let you know where we are. I think I'll start on the Brook Street well, the Brook Street well investigation. And I have a slide, but I don't, I don't know that it really, can I, do I have access to share a screen? Do you know?
You should.
Okay, let me check and see if I, I'll just pull up the, I'll try to pull that up quickly and see if I can share it, just so you can get an idea. Can you see, can you see that?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So just an overview, for anybody that hasn't looked at sort of where we laid out the accessible area. The blue area in the middle is the viable area based on setbacks and all the requirements. We did choose to do the seismic refraction study to make sure that we were getting, our investigation was happening in the areas where we identified the most opportunity to find water. We were able to do that work and evaluate the infrared depth of bedrock and through the center portion of that blue area. The bedrock was relatively shallow and, and so therefore not a great location to do our tests wells. So we're going to be focusing on the southern, eastern portions as we schedule the drilling, which will happen, hopefully, you know, in April. We're working on scheduling that now. That's really the update there. It's kind of a quick overview, but I don't know if there's any questions about that specifically.
How shallow was the bedrock?
That's a good, we're still waiting for the final report, but it was alarmingly shallow for them. So they said, no, not a place to look. So I can get back to you with that information and give you the actual depth.
Because it was a gravel pit, so I was just curious.
Yeah, I'll send that over as soon as I can get it. Probably tomorrow, I can, I can push them to give me the numbers on that tomorrow. I just haven't seen the report.
Yeah. What do, I mean, do you have a sense of, I know it's tough to tell, we haven't drilled anything like that. I mean, we're not chasing our tails here, are we? Looking for water in this area? I mean, you brought up the bedrock being so shallow, obviously a concern, but you found another area in that southeast corner, I guess, of that blue area. I mean, is it, does it look prom, and kind of putting you in the spot a little bit, but.
Yeah.
Promising back there or what?
It's tough to tell. I think that they're favorable, the, the infrared, the seismic refraction work tells those folks that, that, you know, it looks favorable based on the way the ledge is dropping off. All you can really do is go by what, really what the area looks like. And, and you know, you have a really productive well in the adjacent community that's relatively close. So there's water there. It's just, you know, will we find it in this spot? And once you get outside of this blue box, then you're, you're kind of out of luck based on, you know, the setbacks and such.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, good. Fingers crossed.
Exactly. So I don't, let me see. So I don't, I have another, I probably can unshare that. And then really a number of other things. And Toby is on, you heard Toby, and you've had a chance to meet with him at a prior meeting. Be with me one second.
Back in September, October, I think it was.
Yeah, it was a while, yeah.
So we're, we're happy to have been able to get you the, the grant to do some evaluation of your rates. And I'll hold Toby for a second to just give you the, the interconnectivity study, which you've partnered in with a regional group, including Swansea, Fall River and Somerset. Where we've created and combined everyone's model, hydraulic model, and we've done the extended period simulation runs. And, and, and everything seems like it's functional. At this point, everybody's model has been sort of linked up. We have some hydrant flow test data that's needed in each community. So we're going to be getting out that information to each community this week to coordinate those. So a few hydrant tests in each community to get everything sort of calibrated. And then the team is currently on the GIS side, which is specifically Titan. Um, and then, uh, the team is currently on the GIS side, which is specifically Titan, uh, uh, you know, water district focused and, and only for your system. They're, um, they're currently converting the pipe network from the hydraulic model over to give it attributes in the GIS format. And then, um, they'll, they'll be contacting you this week, Jeff, to talk about how to get best get some record plans. So they can have some scanning record plans that might need to supplement what we got from hydraulic model.
Yep.
Um, the water main extension, we're developing a design proposal. Um, I know that you, we put you in, we put together a, um, uh, we put together an application for you for the SRF funding. You were, uh, ranked above the line on that project. So that's a fundable project. I know there's a commitment that you have, um, made to the town to do the work, um, I think, you know, so that they can do their main street work. Um, that, that water main replacement is, uh, we're developing a, a design proposal to send over so you can get a draft probably, um, the end of this week. And let me see, and then, then I guess that just leaves Toby's discussion and I asked Toby to join us to, um, to talk a bit about where we are on, uh, developing the rates and what, what the next steps are there.
Sure. So, um, just to reiterate some of those things that we spoke about at the meeting back in the fall, really, um, they, they're, when you, when you develop a financial model for a utility, it's really in determine your rates, it's really sort of a two step dance. The first is figure out how much money we actually intend any set of rates that we designed to raise. And that's a combination of everything from the operational costs to the capital investment that is needed to, uh, things like insurance, basically as an enterprise funded, uh, entity. Obviously we need the rates to be able to raise all of the money that's going to be spent. And so we have received, um, some of the documentation that we've requested. And, and so of the two step dance, the first being deciding how much money we want to raise. We, uh, basically, we're very well along into having that complete and ready to roll. We do need to, uh, we need to go with you, Scott, probably, uh, not this week, but probably next week. And, uh, with you, Jeff, we need to go and, you know, take some shots at, at what our five year CIP looks like. Cause that will obviously build into the overall cost structure. Um, the pieces that we are still waiting on, uh, is some of the billing information, which I believe we were hoping to get by the end of last week, but I don't, uh, Scott, did you receive that? I know I've not seen it.
I, I think Jeff, uh, said that some of that billing, that billing information maybe went, um, uh, directly to, uh, Jim.
To Jamaican? Okay. I know he was working on the model today, so maybe he and I did not have a chance. I was working on, uh, a project in California for most of the day. So I did not have a chance to go in depth with him on what he was working with. But, um, indeed, if, if we've gotten most of the consumption data, the customer counts, um, fire connection, the information, things along those lines, then we should be in, in good stead to be ready to start sitting down and talking within a couple of weeks at most. Um, so I, I am traveling for work, uh, out, out of New England for the remainder of this week, uh, beginning tomorrow morning. But, um, by all means, you know, I will check in with, uh, with Jim and, and make sure that we are continuing to move that ball. Because as, you know, as, as I've said, that's sort of the second of the two step dance, um, is once we understand how much money we need, uh, and, and we have the second piece already built, then what we'll be able to come in and do is talk about the CIP and see what the actual impacts of different CIP assumptions are, you know? If you do X, Y, and Z, here's what your rates would look like. If you do only X and Z, here's what your rates look like. If you do none of the projects, here's what your rates look like. Um, so that you have basically a measuring stick on, on how we, how to figure out how to move forward over the course of the next five years. So, and as I said, I do think probably about two weeks and we should be ready to sit down and either do a Zoom presentation or hopefully if the world continues to restart, we'll actually be able to come down and, um, project it onto a wall and sit with you and, and be able to get actual human interaction for a change. It's going to be wonderful.
But certain, certainly within, uh, we'll be able to make a presentation in a more detail and show you some of that model work, um, at your next meeting.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, that's a month out, so I, I have no doubt that we'll be ready to sit and have that conversation, uh, a month from now for sure.
Tina, did you send that to Jim? Is that what, did you get that information over to him?
I believe it went over on Friday.
Friday, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
We had a, the billing company we use. There's a little error in what they sent us and then I don't know if they're having trouble in Texas, but I guess they're out of Texas. So.
They are.
One of those. Wow.
They had to create a spreadsheet for us.
Well, they definitely had some trouble in Texas. So, but most of the states, so that seems to make sense.
Yeah. The, uh, I think the power issue in Texas created a whole set of knock on effects for everyone between the power. And in truth, the water, I think the water was the bigger issue. So. So that's where we stand on that. Um, we're, we're moving full speed ahead and fully expect to have basically, uh, be able to have that conversation with you at your next meeting. And after that, basically the, um, you know, the process is really just a week or so for us to write up a report and present it to you and hand off the model so that you can, you know, something that oftentimes happens is, you know, three weeks after we complete the rate study, you know, a, a utility finds out, we want to know what? We just found out about a whole new set of capital investment requirements. And so when, when we hand off the model, we don't, or we don't just hand off the report, we actually hand off the model and, and we'll go through it and make sure you're comfortable making changes to it. So it's a, a living document and a living tool for you rather than just a report on a shelf.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Trust and see what the rates.
Yeah.
It'll be a sliding, we'll be able to make those adjustments. As Toby said, you'll be able to take a look and see, you know, things that you, uh, some, some, you know, nice to have, some, some wants and some real, um, obligations that you have. And take a look and see what, what you want to do to, to adjust that based on the impact of each scenario.
Yeah. I mean, i- in the end, you know, for, if a community doesn't have a sort of tool like, like what we're going to be delivering, a CIP is just as much of a wish list as anything else, because it's, it's what you think you need and want. But without being able to then also understand, can we afford it? And, and are the rate impacts acceptable to the community? Um, it, it really is just something that oftentimes people are, they're, they're sort of paralyzed into inaction rather than taking appropriate action with knowledge that you'll be able to afford it.
Right.
Like in a sense, Toby, it's like, we're not pulling numbers out of thin air. It's a, it's a living, uh, program.
That's exactly right. And as you know, it's, it's Excel based, so it's very simple to use. And it's basically powered with a lot of, though there are some entry fields, but many of the things are, are powered with pull down menus that are quite intuitive. And at least to my way of thinking, of course, I built it over the course of the years. So it's very intuitive to me at this point. But we'll, we'll, we'll walk you guys through it, uh, whoever, which is staff at, uh, DWD needs to be involved. And we will, um, make sure, and in truth, we never really walk away from clients anyway. So, you know, if you, if you have questions that you need assist in answering, once, once the model's built, it's so quick and simple to do most of the assessments that I'm always there for clients. So.
All right, cool. All right. But thanks for your help, the usual.
Okay. My pleasure.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Thank you. It was great to be able to.
All right, Scott.
Be with you folks.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Toby.
See you when I get back, Jeff.
Have a nice evening, everyone.
All right. Thanks, Toby.
Thank you.
All right. We approve the prior minutes, minutes of prior meetings. Is there a motion to approve the meeting? Mean, little variant. Minutes of the February 8th monthly meeting.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The I S A B, the reading of the correspondence. Is there anyone that has any correspondence?
Don't have anything.
No.
Nope.
Okay. The financial conditions. The operating budget to actual balances income for the first eight months of fiscal year is 1,842,438.46 with the expenses at 1,639,882.14, which is 50.6% of our budgeted expenses. The receivables as of February 28th, outstanding receivables are 120,000, $509.75. Wow, I'm so sorry. Hey, it's linked to my phone.
Put a dollar in the change jar for every time the phone rings.
Got to figure out why my Apple phone is tied to the Apple computer. Well, okay. So there's several receivables as of February 28th, outstanding receivables are 120,509.75. The month's commitments are 15,470.47. And the water receivables for the month were 149,360.60. Is there a motion to accept the financial reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The I S A B, is there a motion to approve the expenditure warrants as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The I S A B, superintendent's report.
Um, so. This month's been busy. Uh, we installed a new kitchen. Uh, we received, uh, some free cabinets, uh, from, uh, they were going to be thrown out. So we, uh, we put them in our, our office. So the kitchen's, uh, done. Put a countertop on it. It looks great.
Looks awesome.
Yeah.
It's so good.
Um, filter number, uh, one was finished. Two, two and a half weeks ago, three weeks. It was very quick, uh, and it's, it's, uh, it's performing quite well.
Did it, uh, did we spend all of that money or did we come in under budget? Um, I know we, I guess, we kind of guestimated on some of the other ancillary work that had to be done from the last filter that we did.
We did, we did exactly everything that, uh, we, we did on filter two.
Yeah.
And it was the same, it came in at the same cost. They didn't, the prices were the same from last year. Uh, so we just went ahead and did the exact same thing on the previous filter. Uh, the under drains were, were gone. So we kind of figured that anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was going to have to be done. So we, we've prepared for it well this time knowing. And it, it, less than two weeks it was done.
But at least we didn't spend more, which is always good.
No, no. Um.
Still waiting on the welder though, right?
Still waiting on the welder. Behind, but all we have to do is drain it. There's nothing it needs to do inside. So he should, he should, he'll be able to do his work. Uh, just kind of waiting on his timetable. Uh, kind of. Not tentatively, I'm kind of setting in stone. We're going to flush at the end of April, last week of April. Um, Greg and I are setting that up now. So we will be flushing end of April. We will send out notices. Uh, we'll also send out notices for, uh, the irrigation regulations this year. We'll send them out at the same time.
So, so do we have, yeah, I mean, ob- obviously flushing end of April, let's get the notices out, I would say as soon as possible. Once you guys iron out a date.
Yep.
And then are we all set with the irrigation regulations this year? Are we changing it up from, uh, obviously we all know last year was a, a complete ban.
Yep.
But are, are we thinking about going every other day? What, what's the, what's the game plan?
We're hoping to, uh, I would be proposing to do our, uh, phase two, which allows for.
Go right into phase two, you were saying?
Right into phase.
Like start right there. Yeah.
There's four phases. Um, it's basically the DEP's model. Uh, so first, uh, phase two would consist of odd houses would be able to irrigate on Mondays and Thursdays, even houses on Tuesdays and Fridays, nothing on Wednesday, nothing on the weekend. Uh, and that it's set at a specific time. So you have to irrigate between five and eight in the morning, which allows us to gain all night, all day after that, so we can keep up. Uh, I, I personally think this is the, basically the option that allows people to still water their grass.
Kind of like that. I like to water my grass, but, um, but it, it, I mean, if we, we limit it to between say 5:00 AM and 8:00 AM. And all the even houses in all of Titan that have irrigation are all doing it at one time. Do we have sufficient capacity to be able to handle that? I would imagine we do.
I think it's, I think the issue with us over the, over the years is say the, the blanket odd even that we did. And even if everyone just agreed to it, there wasn't a timeframe to it. So it, it kind of, it was just keeping, it was going all day, you know?
You had to run 24 hours a day.
Yeah. You might want to put it on a day and then the night or for six hours. And it just, we never, we couldn't keep up last year. It, it kind of, it just kept snowballing. It's like, okay, we, nope, here they come again. It's, we never were able to keep up. So I think setting it to a timeframe, which is what we did in Easton. But we didn't have that issue. But this is the model we used in Easton. This is the model that the DEP supports. I think this will allow us, I'm praying this allows us to gain all from 8:00, 8:00 AM to like one in the morning, midnight. So we can just gain all night, all from that point. Um. I think this is our best option and we have to, we're going to have to be pretty vigilant with, you know, people who aren't adhering to it. And we'll know pretty quickly who isn't, uh, by, by our pumping rate. And the weekends, obviously we'll see it.
Yeah, for sure. What, what would be, that's one option, right? It sounds like the best option. But are, what are the other options or?
So phase one would be five to eight in the morning. Uh, I think it was six to nine at night. So you can.
Yeah, six to nine.
Twice a day. Both times. So you're basically hitting it Monday morning if you're an odd house. Yeah. And then six to nine at night, which is essentially Tuesday. You know, and it's, you know what I mean?
Right.
And then the even houses would be Tuesday in the morning and then Tuesday at night. That's phase one.
Okay.
And then obviously Thursday and Friday, the same thing. Uh, phase, phase three is one day for odd and one day for even. That's pretty much where in.
Might as well not even water one day.
Right, exactly. Uh, and phase four is a total day.
Yeah. Okay.
And then obviously we're triggered by certain situations with droughts. So that's another thing to keep in mind. But obviously we, we're out there yet. So.
And the drought as determined by?
The, the state.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. There's a task force for that.
All right.
Uh, as, as we, everyone pretty much knows, Cedar One's replacement well is going in. It's, they're sinking it now. It'll take some time, um, but it's going in. Uh, Cedar Three is going to fall right behind that with a rehab.
Okay. So what's the timeline on Cedar One, uh, as far as getting, you know?
Water coming out of it?
Operational.
About a year.
Okay.
Cedar. Say, so close to a year.
Okay.
We sent letters out for, uh, meter changes. Tina, how many?
He's probably got a handful or so.
How many we sent out though? How many?
Oh, about 140.
140. We sent about 140 letters out.
And back down to 12, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're going to hammer the letters now. Um. We're changing out. We'll have one large meter left in town that hasn't been changed after Friday and that is Aquaria. And I've already worked out, worked it out with her when that one's going to be done. So basically all our large meters have been changed out or tested. One has been tested and the rest have been changed out or downsized. Uh, the taps were put in, Derek, you know, but, uh, for the, um, for Joe Sullivan to test. So those taps have been in the recycle. I got to wait on some pots, but that should be coming in soon. But the, that's read it up. I go, that'll, we'll, we'll pop that in when it comes in. They're just kind of getting it to us still. Uh, I have a, a quote for leak detection. My, hopefully if you guys accept this, like to make a motion today. Um, it's about 120, $125 a mile. It's actually a really good price. I've checked around.
It's like 7,500 bucks total, right?
$7,500 total for a, and, and this guy has an impeccable reputation. Um. Yeah, I. He came highly recommended and his references were quite, quite good. So.
And what, what, um, how long would that? How long would that take? Do you know?
Not very, I, couple of weeks. Couple of weeks. It, it's relatively quick. We only have sixty miles to cover.
Yeah.
Not too bad. He, he should be able to buzz through it pretty good.
And that would pick up, that would pick up. I don't know. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, does it pick up? What size leak does it pick up? Does it?
You're basically listening for a sound that you. You're listening for a sound. So you, he's gonna walk the town. With an aquascope.
Mm-hmm.
He, he's gonna, he's listening. It's, it just makes a certain noise. You just have to know it. It's, it's a hissing sound. And then we follow up on it. Basically he can pin, you can kind of pinpoint a leak by hearing it. So that's, it's, it's actually an older technology, but it's probably the most reliable. In my estimation.
Jeff, is there any number that he like might be, like what kind of number is he gonna get back? You know, I think we talked about through, was it thirty-three percent?
No, we're at, we're actually at twenty-five point one. My numbers were off. So, but still not great. But I.
Well, are we gonna cut that in half or?
It'd be a ten to fifteen, right?
I'd like to get to ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd love to get to ten.
What's he done for other towns? Like how much has he found, so to speak?
Uh, talking to some people who have to have this done, the hard, the hardest thing isn't finding the leaks. It's when you do find them, you have. Seven or eight repair.
Right.
And I don't think the towns ever done this. Uh, there's, there's no record Tina of them actually.
Well, it's, I'm, I remember is when we had that big leak, we had some elite detection company come in to find it, but that was an emergency situation. We haven't did the whole town.
Yeah, so.
Been here.
Well overdue. Yeah, obviously well overdue and in.
And I think we'll, we'll, we should, we should kind of put this in our, our capital to kind of hit. Hit certain, you know, maybe we do a quarter of the town every year from here on out. Something.
Yeah.
See what we find now and then, like you said.
Yeah, I mean, it is an ongoing thing. You, you don't, you know, a leak shows up one day and then the next day.
Right.
You fix it and then there's one four feet away. So.
Right.
And it's not the main.
Hopefully while the holes open.
Yeah. It's really the little, the little pinhole leaks we gotta find. So.
I mean, even if we don't find any major leaks too, I mean, it kind of eliminates that and we can really focus on the meters changing them to meters too as well.
Yep.
There's a pretty big culprit.
I have a feeling he's probably going to find some.
Yeah, if, if it's never been done before?
Yeah, yeah.
The money's on that.
Yep. Um, I guess the other thing I just wanna kind of reiterate that in. You know, and this isn't a testament to the commissioner's past and present is, you know, in the last two years. Just thinking how far we've come, all of you who have been here, Derek, been here for three or four. I mean, the rate study. We, you know, twenty cents on the dollar we're paying for that. Cedar One being done. We're actually doing quite a few projects. Uh, and the workers here have done a great job. Everyone from Tina to Kim to distribution, you know, here in uh, here in the plant. You know, kind of optimizing how we run. I just. You know, kudos to everyone. Everyone I'm speaking to and everyone, you know, who works here. I think we've done a lot.
Yeah.
Yes, done a lot too.
Oh, yeah. We gotta, we gotta keep it some forward. I mean, we gotta just keep through what we're doing every week, every day.
And even, Woodard and Karen, I mean. You know, he, as far as like, I can't even four or five projects they're doing for us. I just met these people maybe a year ago. They're extremely proactive with finding things. You know, helping, helping you help, you know, like the rates, all this stuff. So. I like the relationship we, we've, we've formed with them.
Good.
So, that's all.
So Tina, do you have a line item that we can do something as far as the sleep detection? We get the ball rolling?
I think so. I was playing with the numbers today and I think we could um. Pull it for one of the lines.
Do you wanna make a motion to? Do we have to make a motion for this or can we take it out of the line item to? Move forward with this leak detection?
You can make a motion on it, if you'd like.
Alright, so can I make a motion to accept the quote from the conservation technologies to perform a leak detection service?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we can work on that Tina?
Yep.
Great, thanks.
So Tina, so that would come out of, where would that come out of or what line item?
Oh, let's see.
And does he need the full amount upfront or is he, like how long is this process gonna take?
I'm sure he'll, no, I'm, I'm assuming he's gonna want payment after.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And the way we, you know, you get.
I don't know how they do that. I don't know if it's a deposit and then that's when he's done.
No, I, I mean, I, I'm sure he understands that, you know, you guys have to approve it. It goes through, you know, could take a month.
Yeah.
The other thing is the website.
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
Same amount. Yeah, it's the same.
Right. We've got some money. In um. System maintenance and we have some money left over in, uh, let's see. The general insurance that we can pull from that line over to the system maintenance line. So if we take it out of the system maintenance and we go over on system maintenance, we can pull it from the. The general insurance line.
This should be, I mean, I don't know how you guys felt about the website. It was a very condensed. Um, it's, Tina and I had a, a larger uh, showing. It, it's pretty powerful.
No, and we agree. I mean, you guys, you and Tina are gonna be the main, the main players on that website anyways, along with Kim and. We got the, the ten minute tour, which was, which was good. Um. As long as you guys are comfortable with it. I mean, I, I, I like it. It's, it's gonna be a good tool for us, especially for, for Jeff and Tina. Um.
Agree.
I, I think it's a no brainer. Uh, I mean, the guy has a good record, a good track record with the town, with their website. So I mean, I'm, I'm all in favor for it. Um, it's, it's worth the investment. Um, and it's not. You know, we're, we're becoming more and more technology driven anyways and being, you know, websites and online and everything. So. It, it's, it's, it's past time, let's rock and roll in it, in my opinion.
Yeah, looking at some of those websites that he put in his quote, I mean, you can, you can literally do as much as you want. As much information as you want to pass along, you can. So, like you said, Jason, I think it's, it's a no brainer.
Yeah.
It'd be great if they was, if the residents would set up for that auto, if we have a break or.
We would have to.
Give them, give them like a discount or something for changing out their meter.
I mean, we could, we could, we would really have to push them, the, the residents to sign up for that. Um, obviously it's on them to do it, but. When we send out our bills to put notices in the bills, things like that to, to really get them to use, take advantage of it, obviously. Because Facebook's only get you so much, right? So.
And do that, like online billing or, you know, things like that where people can sign up not only for the newsletter, but also for like, I don't know, can they do paperless billing, things like that? I mean, it's.
Yeah.
That's the way everybody's.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
That way when I'm late with my bill, I can just hop online and do it.
There you go.
Do we wanna make?
We know where you live.
Forward.
What was the total cost of the website?
Um, it was seventy-seven hundred dollars. That included the setup of the website and the first year service.
And then it was.
And then it's twenty-two, yep, twenty-two after that. And we'll be able to do our own updates on a daily basis. Right now I can't. Right now I have to send it out and somebody else updates it.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's a no brainer.
Alright, so we'll move forward with the revised decree in the website?
Yeah, so uh, yes, so move to my part.
Okay.
Second, agreed.
Alright Tina, you can keep going with that. Do, what are they gonna do? A contract? I'm sure it's.
Yeah, they sent us a contract for it.
Okay, alright, we'll stop by the office.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, a couple of other things. I just wanted to mention a few. Those might, maybe it might have been uh, two meetings ago, we had a gentleman in trying to, uh, he petitioned us to come out of the district. On Old Williams. Yeah, and we, we did, obviously it took a little bit, but we did some investigating and uh, all the residents of Old Williams are in the district. So. I mean, I. Kind of is what it is. There's fire protection there.
So I need sustainment.
You need sustain. Be my recommendation, yes.
I agree.
And the other thing is Old William Street is now thinking about not running a water main. And they have asked us to uh, support them in that decision. Uh, to go to tell the building department that we don't have sufficient water to give them. I am not comfortable with saying that. Um, they were approved, what, ten years ago? Uh. So they would have to change their lots, their, the, 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 the structure of their lots, because of, you know, well. Uh, setbacks, the frontage. Uh, and then I would assume Jim would have to agree to that because we're saying now we can't give them water, which. I don't.
They want us to stand up?
Yeah, it's not a stance we should take. I believe, I think it is a precedent that we should not set. Um. It's not, I mean, they conditioned us for water, what, ten, fifteen years ago. It was approved. Now they're coming in and ask, saying they don't want it, but they had already laid out the plans.
Alright, so hold on a second because I'm lost.
Alright.
This isn't the Old Williams. This isn't the one that we talked about.
Yeah, the loop.
This is the sixth lot. This is.
Through to John Street.
So what they have is they have a potential buyer of the property, right?
Oh boy, yeah.
It, honestly, it's nothing we have to worry about too much. They have a buyer for the property.
Okay.
They'll do better, obviously, if they don't have to lay the water main and pay the fees. Like they'll make more money.
Right.
But they've designed a development that requires town water because of the setbacks that you need for wells. They have to redo the entire plan.
Yeah, I don't think we should get involved with this.
I do not either. That is not something we should get. This is bad, bad news.
Yep, we've already gone through this. We already met with them. We already went through this whole thing. Tie in, tying the loop, asking Matt to go and get that variance or ask if we can get that little piece of land so we can tie in a loop. No, this is, this is not.
Agreed.
That's, that's totally, totally wrong.
No.
That's wasting everybody's time. Yeah, let them worry about that. That's, that's on their leg. And if it's something shady, Jim is not gonna allow it anyways. So.
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't feel clean.
No, I'm not doing it. So, okay.
That's it. So I got.
Alright, old business, uh, Bristol County Agricultural School.
Button law.
Okay, E-Mobile and Tana Renewal.
Nothing new on that.
Okay, meter update program. We already.
Yeah, we went through that.
Talk about that. New business, the budget fiscal twenty, twenty-two, first draft.
I just sent it to you guys. You can look it over if you have any questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it yet, so I'll need some time.
Yeah. So you can shoot us messages or.
Alright, announcements. Next regular meeting of the board of commissioners will be Monday, April twelfth at six PM.
Good.
You guys have to check with that.
Um, the twelfth of April, let me look here, should be, is that a Monday night?
Yes.
How are you, Eric?
That's fine. I can do it. Uh, one way or another, I can do it. If I'm traveling like I am now, just zoom in and, you know, whatever. We'll figure it out.
Yep, that's fine. Six o'clock, same, right?
That's fine.
Yes.
Yep. Yep, I'm good.
Okay, Paul. The district annual election will be held on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Requests to be placed on the ballot are available to district office until April sixth.
Make sure you pull your papers, Derek.
I don't know. Annual district meeting will be May twenty-seventh. Is there any public input? Nope.
Yeah, nothing?
Yeah, I forgot. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I just, um, I wanted to say thank you very much for having me tonight. Um, I feel like I've learned a lot in the last, uh, just over an hour or so. Um, uh, it's a lot to learn. Uh, you guys have a lot on your plate, uh, for sure with everything that's going on. I would say. The number one thing I've heard walking around town when I'm knocking on doors is issues with water and I'm sure that's not fun for you guys to be. Hearing that. I know we have old infrastructure here in town and, and uh, it's gonna take a lot of work to, to upgrade. So. I just wanted to be a part of that, learn a little bit from you all, uh, hear from you all about how um, you would wish to partner with the town. Um, you know, as you can see, I'm running for select board. And um, if elected, you know, it's definitely something that I'd like to be in communication with you all on and, and partner with you all. Um, so if you have any questions for me or anything that you'd like to know about me, I'm happy to answer that. But again. I just appreciate, this is, you know, obviously my first meeting. I don't live in the Dayton Water District, actually. I, I get Somerset Water. So um, this is my first time attending.
I have THMs.
Now, now, uh, thanks for joining. Um, obviously there's, if any questions you may have, you know, in particular, don't hesitate to reach out to us. Um, we, we try to inform the folks around town as, as best as we can. Um, you know, rumors travel fast and. Happy, you know, they're all, most of the time rumors. Um, so we're trying to. We're trying to make up for lost time. Um, so it's, it's gonna be a um. How do I wanna say? A rude awakening. Once we start doing all these capital improvements and rate studies and, and the rates are definitely gonna go up. Uh, there's no, there's no. Denying that. So it's, it's gonna be fun for the next couple of years, that's for sure. But um, feel free to reach out.
Things are getting done. To your point, things are getting done.
Things are getting.
Yeah, we're trying. We're trying the fastest we can with what we, what we have right now. I mean. We had a lot of issues at the plant, a lot of issues on the field and, and it's just, we tried picking a little bit of everything to try to, you know. If we don't have the water to treat, but the treatment plant and it's just been kind of a snowball effect for the last few years. That we've now gonna handle on, but we're trying the fastest we can to straighten this stuff out.
Definitely, from, from what I heard from tonight, it definitely sounds like it. And that uh, website looks like a great step in the right direction and. You know, just overall, it's, it's an older town, older infrastructure and we've got a. I, I think the biggest thing is communication to folks about why this is happening and how this is happening. So I really loved what uh, you were hearing, I was hearing from the folks um, earlier. About the CIP and, and that sort of thing. I think getting that information distributed will be, will be uh, really key.
Absolutely.
But thank you very much.
Well, good luck. Keep in touch.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, wanna go on the executive session? Alright, is there a motion? Oh boy, is there? I think I have to sneeze. No, alright, is there a motion to go on executive session under the provisions of chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, Jeff.
There it is.
Alright, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, the eyes have it. We will not be coming back with the open session.